Okay, so inside the building, you'll need to have permission.
Oh, no ma'am, I don't need permission.
No sir, you cannot just walk through and film.
Georgia Transparency is going hot at the Cowee de County School Systems Central Office here.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning, how are you ma'am?
Good, how are you? Can I help you?
Uh, just taking some pictures and some film of the building, that's all.
Okay, so are you careful?
Uh, just, just for myself ma'am. Your name ma'am? Your name ma'am?
One, one moment please.
What is your-
I'll be right back.
What is your name ma'am?
Hello?
Good morning ma'am, how are you doing today? I'm super, thanks for asking. I, I don't-
Where, where, what did you do?
Uh, I don't know what's going on.
Oh.
She told me to stay here and just left. Not sure. Oh well. I'm gonna carry on then.
Huh?
So I'm gonna carry on then.
Sir, can you just please wait up here until she gets back, please?
Ma'am, can I get your name please?
Could you just have a seat right there?
Oh, no ma'am, I'm, I'm fine standing up. Can I have your name?
Okay, you just have, just wait up here please until she gets back.
Uh, what is your- What is your name ma'am?
Sure, hold on a moment please.
Uh, ma'am, can I get your name please?
You guys, please, I'm quite busy.
Oh, I'm just curious, that's all.
How are you? How can I help you?
Oh, your name please ma'am?
I'm Vera Harris.
Uh, my name's Russ ma'am.
Hey Russ.
Uh, just, just taking some pictures and some film in the public areas of the building, that's all.
Okay, so inside the building, you'll need to have permission?
Oh, no ma'am, I don't need permission.
No sir, you cannot just walk through and film throughout the building.
Um, I'm allowed to, I'm just not allowed to go into restricted areas.
All of this area is restricted?
Where's the signs?
These are all offices. These are all offices?
Where's the signs?
So if you need to actually see a layout or something, you let me know. What do you, what do you need to see?
Where's the signs ma'am?
What sign are you looking for?
The signs that says restricted authorized personnel only.
Uh, the office act or office spaces, the restricted areas?
Yeah, but where does it say that at ma'am?
What do you need to, what do you need to see sir?
I'm just here taking some pictures and some film of the building and seeing how wonderful the building is and everything, got some questions to ask and-
What questions would you like to ask?
I would like to not be bothered, I would like to continue, um, doing what I'm doing and then just gathering content for my story, then I'll be up out of here.
Okay, so who do you work for?
I work for myself, I'm independent.
Okay, so if you'll step over and if you'll have a seat, I'll get our assistant superintendent to come over and speak with you?
Oh, no ma'am, I'm good, I don't need anybody, I just, I need to-
You do need our assistant superintendent.
I don't need nobody, I'm just gonna keep uh-
You won't be allowed to go throughout the building, sir.
I'm just gonna keep doing, just getting my content ma'am, that's all I'm doing.
Okay, so here's Mr. Bass, we can talk with him.
What I'm doing is perfectly legal ma'am.
I understand, I'm not talking about the legality of it, sir.
But you're stopping me from doing-
No, I'm just saying you can't go into offices down here, that's what we have, is all these are offices.
Okay, I'm not, okay, I'm not going into any restricted areas.
But you don't know what, what areas are, where are there offices, is what I'm saying.
Michael, you scared people to death. That's not Michael, that's Michael Terrell.
No, I knew it was Mo.
No, he wants to go through the, throughout the building and film all the, all the whereabouts and all, and through the offices and I, I told-
Uh, you can't do that for safety reasons.
Oh, is that against the law?
We're not, we're not gonna have people come video buildings.
Oh, I'm sorry, your name sir?
I'm Mr. Bass, I'm assistant superintendent.
Ah, thank you sir, my name's Russ, and what is her name up here?
She's secretary.
And what's her name?
Uh... Why, why do you need to know, what, why are you wanting to film?
Because I can, I'm gathering-
For what?
And for, uh... Gathering content for my story on the building and the Cowee de County School System.
No, uh-uh, we're not, we're not gonna film inside office buildings.
Oh, so I can't film in here?
No, no, I'll, I'll get approv, I'll have to get SRO approval, police approval.
No, we don't, we have approval already sir. It's the US Constitution.
No.
Freedom of the press.
No.
No? It's the US Constitution.
No.
Freedom of the press.
No.
No? It's the US Constitution.
No.
Freedom of the press.
No.
No?
So I just talked to Mr. Kessering, and Mr. Kessering said he has permission to film just right in here, you cannot go down the hallways and into the offices.
Okay.
That you're doing it for internet service, but you could only, right here, as far as-
There's no constitutional law about filming in an office.
There's no constitutional law about filming in public?
Filming in an office, this is, this is a office.
So you're saying I'm not allowed to film?
You can go outside and film all you want.
So I can't film in here?
You can film right here.
But you said I couldn't?
He just said you had approval. I, I said there's no constitutional law about filming in an office.
Would you mind if I come by and, and uh-
Yeah, I'd be fine, you can film right here.
Um, but there's no, what's, there's... This is open to the public.
We're not gonna walk around and film office space for safety reasons, that's it.
But sir-
We're not gonna do it, I'm not gonna let you walk into school and film it either.
I'm not going to a school sir.
You're in a public school?
This is the administration building.
Owned by the schools.
Owned by the people, by the public. We pay your, we pay your salary.
You wanna film this, you can film this, otherwise, listen to me-
We pay your salary.
I agree.
Okay, then this is our building, this is the people's building. This is the people's building.
If you wanna go get a vote on paying my salary-
We don't need a vote sir, the taxes pay your salary. I don't understand what you're talking about.
Can you call me if he-
Alright guys, I just gotta interject really quick, I hate interjecting, this superintendent or assistant superintendent appears to be one of the dumbest assistant superintendents I've came in contact with yet thus far. It gets so much better, let's keep watching.
If you wanna film this office right here, you've got permission from what I said.
Sir, you're not making any sense.
Otherwise, I'm gonna call somebody to escort you off campus.
I will not be escorted off this campus.
Or you can take down the ca, I'll walk you through the building, but we're not gonna film it.
I'll go with you if we can continue filming.
If you can.
I'm not leaving the campus and I'm not leaving this property until I'm done getting my content sir.
You can get it right here, what do, I don't understand what you need the content for. Can you explain to me what the-
It's private right now, I, I can't release it at this time.
Then I can give it to you.
Do you understand that's a violation-
No, it's not.
Of the, of, of the rights?
Well, you, you go, you go get me something saying you have the right to film this, and I'll do it.
There's already something, sir, it's the US Constitution.
Go get me a copy, which says, when the constitution where it says it, and I will-
Do you know what the first amendment is?
Explain it to me.
You explain it to me, I know it.
No, you, you, you-
You're an educator for our youth of this county, you explain it to me.
First amendment, explain it to me.
Do you know what it is?
I do, but I want you to explain it to me.
Okay, I'll let you ponder on that for a little bit, so... I would like to please be, is this a public area back here? The hallways and everything, because y'all got art on the walls and, uh, there's everything back here that I would like to, you know, document.
And what are you documenting it for?
It's private right now ma'am. It's private at this moment, I haven't released my, I haven't released it yet.
Can it be a security breach?
No, man, what are you talking about?
Could it be a security breach?
It's a public area!
Okay.
Are you, are you stupid?
That's what you wanna call me.
I'm not calling you, I'm asking you a question. I said are you, I didn't call you, I said are you stupid?
So Mr. Bass offered to give you, to walk you through without the filming.
Oh no, he can walk me through, but I'm gonna continue filming.
Okay, so that's-
The public areas.
Okay, that, that part is the part that's a concern.
Why?
Well, one of the concerns is that you don't know the layout of the building, so you can, you can walk right into an office just by going through a space. And you wouldn't know that until you were already there.
That's not making any sense ma'am.
Cam has someone on the way.
So we have police on the way?
I, we'll talk with Mr. Bass.
Oh, we have a cam back. Hey, uh, Mr. Bass?
Yeah.
This is your warning sir, do not delete that footage off your phone, I'm gonna full you request it, that's now a part of public record sir. So whatever you do, do not delete that footage sir, that is your warning. You think it's funny?
How about yours?
You think, mine's gonna be up, you, you'll be able to view mine soon.
I can request yours as well.
You don't need to request mine, mine's gonna be on, mine's gonna be on my channel.
What channel?
You'll be able to see it, Georgia Transparency. You'll be able to see it.
Okay.
It'll be on very, very soon. Y'all, alright, police are called, so we'll, uh, we'll hang out, we'll wait for the police, the police are gonna educate y'all. Police are gonna give y'all an education of what public property is. Hey, sir, is y'all slush fund, available online? Uh-uh, no, uh-uh, stop, no, uh-uh, no sir. No sir, do not touch me. Do not touch my equipment.
Don't put your camera in my face.
You walked up to me sir. You walked up to me. No, negative. No sir, you will not touch me.
Don't touch me.
I didn't touch you sir, you grabbed my equipment. Is the police on the way? Sir, you're gonna learn today. You can't just go around putting your hands on people. Sir, you grabbed my cam, okay. Sir, you grabbed my cam. Okay. So you touched me? You grabbed me? Sir, that, okay, whatever you say. We'll wait for the police. I did sir. Uh, your name and badge number? McGee? Uh, Russ, how you doing sir? How you doing? Uh, I've been assaulted in here, I believe, by the, uh, assistant superintendent Vince Bass, um, and I, and I'm willing, um, I'm willing to show this, I have it all on camera. And I'm willing to show this to you, I would like to press charges against him.
Okay, what, how were you assaulted?
Um, I was taking pictures and filming in a public area, I'm a journalist, and, uh, he came up to me and, uh, just, he got like really, I'm not gonna get close to you, but he got really close to me. Grabbed my camera, grabbed my hand, twisted my hand, and, uh, I had to grab his hand and fight my camera back away from him, all in a publicly accessible area.
You have the video?
I have the video of it, sir.
Oh, you wanna see the video?
Okay, hey guys, uh, we're live right now, um, I've gotta cut the livestream right now, is your body cam rolling sir?
Yes.
Okay, alright, cool. Sorry guys, uh... Police have arrived, I've showed the officer my footage that I have, and my hand is actually starting to like kinda hurt a little bit, so, uh... Let's just, let's just wait and see what happens.
You got your ID on you?
I do sir.
Can I get it?
Are we doing charges?
I'm gonna do a report.
Oh, no, are we doing charges?
I'm doing a report.
No, are we charging him?
Do you wanna give me your ID so I can do the report and explain to you what you can do?
Can you explain to me first and then I'll give you my ID? I'm fine with you, okay, I, I'm fine with providing you my information.
Okay.
That's not an issue, I, I don't mind giving you all of that, this guy assaulted me in a publicly spaced, I showed you the video, he needs, I want to, I, I want him, I wanna press charges.
Okay. I need your ID, and then I'm gonna explain to you everything, okay? Can you give me your ID please?
Oh, yeah, hold on, let me grab it, it's in my truck.
Sir?
Name, badge number sir?
Mine?
Yes sir.
That's Rawlings, badge number's four seventy-seven.
Ah, okay, cool.
I need an actual driver's license, or ident, actual identification.
Sir, that's a government identification.
Do you have your driver's license?
I do, but that's a, that's a, that's a DOD issued.
Okay, I need your driver's license.
For what though?
For the report.
But that's got everything you need on, for, for your report sir.
It doesn't have the whole land, which is what we use to run, to pull your information up, so we can add it into the report.
Oh, okay, so that government issued ID's not gonna work?
The numbers on it aren't what we use for our system, so that we use the, through the, uh, Department of Driver Services.
So why do you need to run my information?
To add it to the report.
Yeah, but you need my name, my birthday, and that's just, you know, the basic stuff.
You have about driver's license where it'll-
I'm not answering any questions about that, I, I came in here-
If you can't answer our questions, then we can't help you.
Alright, I really hate interjecting, but if I can't answer your questions, you can't help me, I provided you an identification card, a government identification card, I showed you video evidence of a crime that happened, so... You can't help me just because I won't answer the questions that you want me to answer. Noonan PD, that is shame on you. I am, I gave you an identification card sir.
Well, we're asking for a proper identification card that we can-
That is proper sir.
We need the one that we can use-
I've got that, I got that ID from Fort, from Warner Robbins.
Listen, we need your driver's license, so that we can use it in our system to do it the proper way. Can you provide us with your driver's license?
What's the proper way? I, I, I'm, I'm-
Do you want our help or not?
Yes, that's why I called you, this guy assaulted me.
Can you have your driver's license so that we can help, please?
Jesus, so that will, I, I'm just asking, that will not work?
That's not what we need, no.
That won't work, so, uh-
I need an actual driver's-
Okay, okay, I, I'll give you my driver's license.
It's not what we use.
Not for us, we're not military.
It doesn't matter, it's an, it's a government issued ID card though.
We're telling you, it, it does for us.
Can y'all get a supervisor out here?
No sir.
You ain't gonna get a supervisor?
No, they're chasing the car right now.
Okay, well then, I guess we can wait for them when they get done chasing the car?
Maybe.
Okay, I find, I got all day.
Provide your driver's license, and we can, uh-
I think they're trying to back up. Uh, we'll get out of their way, sorry, we're all out here in the middle of the road and stuff.
Does it say your birthday on it? That don't look like it.
Since you have that on video, what you can do, take all the information up to the magistrate courthouse, and if you wanna take out warrants on him to press charges, the judge will say, yes you have enough, or no you don't. All you gotta do is go up to the magistrate courthouse right here, you know where it is, off of Greenwood Street?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna give you a case number, you'll just take that up there, they'll be able to pull up everything.
Okay.
As far as this building, um, they have asked that unless you have official business here, meaning not just recording the building, unless you have official building, business here, they don't want you back.
I have official business here.
And what would that be?
I'm a journalist getting content for my story. And that you cannot turn a constitutional protected activity into a crime. That's why I asked for a supervisor that's a little bit more knowledgeable than this, because now, not only are y'all not doing anything about, I've, I've been assaulted in here, but now you're telling me, if I don't have business here, I gotta leave. This is the, and this is Noonan Police Department in Georgia guys. So now I've, you know what? Yeah. So now I've been assaulted in here, trying to get content for my story, at the Cowee de County Central School System. Noonan Police aren't doing anything now, they just wanna do a report and I can take warrants, and then I have to leave the property.
You understand everything?
I understand, and I think it's bull crap, because had I put my hands on him, y'all put me in cuffs and take me to jail and charged me. It, it's, it's not right man.
You are entitled to your opinion?
Oh, I am, I'm entitled to, yes I am. Your body cam rolling too sir?
Yes sir.
Yeah, I know.
Are you familiar with the, how to get him if you want?
Oh yes, oh, I'm very familiar with the, yes sir. Yes sir, I'm very familiar with open records sir, I am. So, uh, basically, this is my understanding. Come out here, try to get content for my story, I get assaulted, I call the police, I show the police the evidence, and now, I ha, I have to do all the work to go down there and take a warrant. If I assaulted him, y'all wouldn't tell him that, y'all would arrest me, y'all wouldn't make him go down there and get a warrant. Alright guys, this is, uh, Noonan, Georgia, or Noonan Police Department in Noonan, Georgia. This is the Officer McGee badge number, this is the case number. And everything, oh, did y'all run me for warrants?
They ran your name, and if you had a warrant, it would come up.
Ah, okay, okay, alright, I was just curious, that's all. Yeah, I figured.
It does automatically, like, when you run, the way our system works, if, uh, even if it's somebody that's like close to your name or has your birthday, it'll pop up just in case you're lying, but, uh, nothing came up, your license is valid.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know.
All that good stuff, you're here to do.
I know exactly, okay, so we're not going to, I can't press charges on him, I have to go to, I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly. So I have to go to magistrate court and take out a warrant on this gentleman? With this case number and my evidence? Okay, so what if I put my hands on him?
Right now?
No, I'm just saying if- No sir, I'm not saying anything, no, don't put words in my mouth sir. I'm saying if the, I'm saying if the roles were reversed, and they called you out here because I put my hands on him. And they showed you video evidence of this, what would y'all do to me? Would y'all take me to jail, or would y'all tell him to go get a warrant?
Same scenario, if you advise the same thing, if, what if it does, um, happen?
No. Okay, well, I'm gonna go in here and continue my story, I'm gonna finish up everything, and, uh, then I'm gonna get out of here. Why?
Did they say you could stay here, or did they?
Sir, this is public property. This is public, will you arrest me if I go back in there?
They don't want you here.
They don't want you in here.
I don't think you can stay here.
I haven't committed a crime. This is public property funded by the taxpayers. They can ask all they want. I'm gonna go back in there, and I'm gonna continue my story. If you want to arrest me-
What I would be concerned with-
I don't wanna be arrested.
Is if your presence there would cause breach of the peace for the people that are here, not saying that's your intent.
You can't turn a constitutional protected activity into a crime, their feelings do not trump the US Constitution, honor your oath officer, their feelings do not constitute- Then you need to honor your oath, you gotta honor your oath sir. You have got to honor your oath. Sir. Honor your oath then, honor it. Their feelings don't trump the law. You're not helping me!
I'm saying, if you go in there, it could cause probably possible issues, but you, I get the whole public property, taxpayer state and all that, understand that. Um, I would just be cautious of it, so that you don't get in trouble and they don't get in trouble.
How am I getting in trouble by- I'm not gonna put my hands on them, I am not gonna do that, and I, and I, that's just, I, I, I am not a violent person, I'm here to peacefully... I'm here to peacefully exercise my rights under the first amendment. If you want to arrest me for that, because of how they feel, I will go peacefully, I will not fight you. But you're telling me I have to leave.
I didn't say that either.
Do I have to leave? Okay.
We're trying to help.
Oh, I understand you're trying to help me.
We're telling you to do something, or we're trying to give you advice.
Okay, so, you're telling, I, I'm, I understand your advice, and I'll take your advice into consideration, I'm asking you, do I have to leave, simple yes or no?
I don't believe so right now.
Okay, do I have to leave Officer McGee?
I don't know if I'd stay somewhere that's-
No, yeah, yeah, I, I, yes or no?
I'm telling you it's best for me.
Okay.
Well, I mean-
And what happens if I stay here?
Well, and if you get sued or anything, but then you decide to stay somewhere, you're assaulted, it may not look good on you, and to try to get a warrant, does that make sense? If you really want to try to get a warrant on this guy, but then you hang around where you're just assaulted?
So I get assaulted, I have to leave, and then my rights are violated, so, this is what happens.
I'm trying to give you advice, that's-
I don't, I, I understand your advice sir, and I will take your advice into consideration, I will, but I don't have to listen to your advice sir. And, the thing is, is that... If y'all are telling me to leave, or I will be arrested, I will leave. I know you haven't said that, but we're beating around the bush here, we're not getting a concrete answer. Do I have to leave this property?
I'm trying to figure where you have to leave or not, let me talk to them, I'll make a phone call and make sure I give you the most, eight one advice, and then we'll go from there.
Let's do that sir, okay, yes sir, let's do that, I, I'm perfectly fine with that, yes sir.
Are y'all want this gentleman to leave for security, to leave for his property here? If he, if he doesn't have official business, I prefer he not leave.
Sir, you can't turn a constitutional protected activity into a crime, I do have official business here.
Can you define official business for me?
Sir, I'm gathering content for my story.
What story?
It's private right now at this time, and I have not released it.
That, that's not official business, but the school system-
So you're gonna violate my rights in front of this police officer?
Uh, I might say that if you don't have official business, I prefer you not leave.
I'm not laundering sir. I have official business here. Y'all might wanna get a supervisor out here.
Let me, uh, well, I'll make a phone call, get your first opinion, um-
Okay.
And we'll give you an education.
Okay.
Uh, can you have him wait outside with you while you do this?
If you don't, could you sit just so I can see you, and where I'm at?
I prefer to stay in a public area so I can record publicly. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do anything, everything's live right now, I'm not gonna do nothing.
You're not, you're just making everything harder for me, 'cause I'm really trying to help you.
I know you're trying to help me, but you need to help me by honoring your oath and protecting my rights, 'cause he can't just make me leave a public area just because- He doesn't feel, but you're trying to, you're trying to make me get out of here now as well, you know what, okay, let's go, come on, yeah. Alright, let's go sir, let's do that, yes sir, let's do that. You're welcome sir. Jeez, these freaking police man. I, I'm sorry, I got really bad hearing, I ain't trying to like run up on y'all, no, I just got bad hearing.
Um, basically, he's, he's calling, let's just basically run up the chain and make sure we give the best answer, 'cause the thing, so... The way I'm kinda looking at it, there's, there's public property here, right, and all that, um, you kinda have to have a reason, you're able to articulate a little bit, that you have a reason that you're doing the story. Uh, I don't know if it's a good enough reason or not, but-
Oh, so the freedom of the press is not a good enough reason?
Not necessarily. Um... But then, none of that there says restricted access or anything, now, I think if you're like trying to go in people's offices and stuff, or said restricted access something, then that may be a problem, but... Right now, I don't see a problem, unless it ends up becoming disorderly where people are arguing with each other, causing a breach of peace, but, they're gonna double check, basically, and go out.
But, how is, um, so, how am I breaching the peace if they're approaching me? And they're all getting all bent out of shape out, and they approach me, I'm not causing any problems in there, I'm in there gathering content for my story, and you cannot take, a, you cannot take a, a, a constitutional protected activity and turn it into a crime, you can't do that.
I agree, I want, I want you to feel the exercise all your-
Exactly, so we need to-
I'm not like restricted access, um, then you should be good.
You got something, you got something.
I'm sure.
No. Oh, your cord's coming undone, okay, okay.
Grabbing, grabbing it right on the ground. Um, I guess you're seeing from the school board in there, they like to talk to you, it's up to you whether you wanna talk to them, but if you wanna go back inside, I can walk through again there, come on.
Oh, can I be uninterrupted and like, without an escort, I just wanna go gather my content?
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, you said it was on, somewhere, don't say restricted access, and people can be in there, and articulate, at least a reasonable lightness here, if that makes sense?
Okay. So if he won't to do his documentary, or whatever it is, he can film from the lobby.
Anywhere that's not, that says, it doesn't say restricted access?
Beyond, beyond our lobby, this desk is considered, uh, check.
Okay, that makes sense.
So going beyond the desk would not be acceptable, or beyond the lobby would not be acceptable, uh, for security reasons.
So for security reasons?
That's our security.
Well, that's an applicable reason, I think that's fair.
Oh, so if I go past that, I'll be arrested? I will be?
Well, without escort, or without, uh-
Let's escort, let's go.
Well, no, 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 without our escort.
But he's a police officer.
Or without, without, uh-
They're not paying me.
School related business. Yeah, school related business, or if he wants to call and set up an appointment for somebody, uh, to show him around the building. Now, I'm not sure we let him film it for security reasons, but he wants to, to the building.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know what all that got back.
Well, just for, just for safety, we got, we got, yeah, we got student, uh, enrollment center in the back. We got a, a special ed Situation for student services, it's just for privacy reasons of students.
Can y'all get us-
If he wants to film here, he can, he can sit here, I guess to close the business.
This is a public, what about the other people that just came in and walked through and said, hey, I'm here to see so and so? No, she didn't. They walked back there by themselves. I have school related business.
Tell me what it is.
It's my content for my story.
What is it?
It's private right now, until I release it. Yes, it is.
How can it be school related business if we don't know what the business is?
You don't have to know until I release it. Sir, y, y, you are like the dumbest school official.
Hey, you're good, bud.
Why are you going? Where are you running to? Why are you running off? You scared?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Ma'am.
Hey, good morning. Can I help you?
Yeah, trying to figure out what, uh-
So I'm just gonna get some footage of the outside and then uh, like I said, I will leave once y'all leave. Oh, one more thing. Thank y'all, uh, I wanna thank y'all for not, uh, honoring y'all's oath today and standing up for the US Constitution. I appreciate that. Thank y'all. Hey, sir, just one more question. Um, if I violated the restricted area access, would you have to go down to the magistrate court and get a warrant for me and then come arrest me or you just arrest me on the spot?
Would I do, we're able to do warrantless affidavits.
Oh, so I'd get arrested on the spot? Okay, why can't we do a warrantless affidavit for that since it happened and I showed you the evidence of it?
This case, I showed it later and saw that. So I didn't gather all that information, but I'm not doing the report. I'm just here to help them, help people, and help everybody. I'm just here out there, okay?
Okay.
In a lot of cases now at this, where it's, you said, she said, fake information, but if it's not enough for us, we've got probable cause has been reached and we advise the party To take warrants, allow them to take warrants and they take.
Wait, hold on. You said probable cause hasn't been reached. I showed, I didn't show you the video. I showed him the video. He put his hands on me, grabbed my camera and tried to take my camera away from him. I had to wrestle with him for a second to get my equipment back, my camera back. This guy attacked me in there. I've got all the probable cause you need right here on my camera and I showed him. Okay, so anything I do that violates the law, I get arrested on the spot, guys. And uh, the Coweeeta County School System can uh, violate people's rights and break the law and assault people. And then it's up to you to fight the uh, the turmoil of the court system to uh, to try and do something about it. It's a big, big freaking fail today with the Coweeeta County School System. Big fail. You should be freaking ashamed of y'all selves. And then there goes the police. Bye. Get the freak out of here. Y'all aren't good for nothing anymore anyways. Freaking Noonan PD. And you know what? We had a good video on them before and now they're just, just straight garbage. Why when I come into Coweeeta County, I have to go live? Why do I have to go live in Coweeeta County? So, alrighty guys, I'm gonna cut this, uh, cut this here and uh, get on up out of here. So uh, this is Georgia Transparency. I love all you guys. Thanks for stopping in. Thanks for joining in. I'm gonna get the uh, rest of the video, uh, try to get it uploaded sometime today that shows the uh, events that led up to me going live. So uh, Alrighty guys, so without further ado, uh, I wanna thank y'all. Uh, I appreciate it. Thanks for stopping in. Hit that like, share, subscribe. Uh, PayPal donations, at GATransparency.com. Cash app is GATransparency. Uh, if you feel free, if you wanna donate, donate, please. It keeps me out on the road And it keeps me exposing all this corruption. So uh, without further ado, love you guys. Love all y'all. And uh, I will holler at y'all next time and Georgia Transparency is out.